I'd like to call the order, the September 2022 Lancaster County Planning Commission. Welcome everyone that's in attendance, all the commission members. Did everyone receive their meeting minutes package?
Yes.
Time to review, any changes or updates needed or noted? Any changes or modifications? All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to welcome Don Gill back. We've got, the first item on our agenda is a public hearing. It's gonna address a solar, a request for solar determination substantial confirmation Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan for impact power solution, Mr. Gill?
Mr. Chairman, the determination of substantial conformance is typically called a 2232 review. You all are familiar with that, you've had five previous ones in the past. You've, in all five of those, you've determined that those did in fact, were in fact, in substantial conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. This is your first 2232 review since Chapter 6 of the comp plan has been revised. You'll see the revised language in your package. This is also the first 2232 review that you all will have had since the solar ordinance was amended back in June. Now, I do want to make a very clear distinction here that the planning commission's job is not tied to the ordinance tonight. I just included the ordinance in the package so you could see the changes that were made by the Board of Supervisors. Not only the recommendations that the planning commission forwarded, but also recommendations from county attorney and county attorney staff. We brought in an additional attorney back when this was being reviewed who was highly regarded in the industry as a solar expert who helped with that revision of the solar ordinance. But, to get back to my main point, the 2232 review by the planning commission is not tied to the ordinance. So, do not, do not make your decision based on the ordinance. Your 2232 review is based upon conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. The three elements that are stated in Code of Virginia Section 1522232, location, character, and extent. So, if you all deem that the location, the character, and extent of this project fits with the comp plan of Lancaster County, then you should make that recommendation to the board. If you feel that it doesn't, then you should make, make that recommendation to the board. So, this is for a small utility scale project off of Route 3. The amount of land on the panel would be just over 10 acres, it's two megawatts. The entire parcel is more than 76 acres. It's located off of Route 3 between Kilmarneck and Whitestone. Tax map number 28191, and it's in District 4. So, I think I've hit all the points that I had in my memo to you. Staff has reviewed this, we have determined that it is a complete application. And the process moving forward is the planning commission makes a determination tonight as to whether or not it believes it's in substantial conformance with the comp plan, makes that recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And then, at the October 27th, I believe is the date, Board of Supervisors meeting is when the Board of Supervisors will consider the special exception application before that body at that time. And that's also a public hearing as well. So, I'll be, I did include the entire package that they submitted. It's quite lengthy, quite involved, you could see the sketches in there of where the solar array would go, the fenced area, the 40-foot vegetated buffer around it. There's even a berm on the, I believe it's the southern side. So, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions for you. I know the applicant is here tonight and can address any questions as well when the public hearing is open.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Gill?
Yeah, I have one. The setback requirement in our revised ordinance is like, what, 1,075 feet for a four-lane highway on Route 3? They have a setback at 250 feet, so we're not to take that into account?
No, the ordinance, there's also a provision in that ordinance which states that the Board of Supervisors can increase or decrease any of those setbacks as a condition of approval of a special exception. So, they can consider these on a case-by-case basis. So, as I, as I just stated, the planning commission's review is not tied to the ordinance. Planning commission's review is tied to the Comprehensive Plan and whether or not you believe the location, the character, and the extent fits with the comp plan.
Silly but true. Any other questions? Before we open the public hearing, I'd like to hear from Yafkin.
Good evening, my name is Jesse Diamond, I'm from IPS Solar. Thank you for having me tonight. The landowner, Raleigh Simmons, is also with me. He will likely speak later about why he chose IPS Solar and why he would like to do this. A little bit about the project, back in February, we originally applied under the old ordinance. We followed the rules of the ordinance at that time. And so, since the ordinance has been revised, we have not changed that setback, I wanted to address that as to why it was 250 feet. And that's, we're here to discuss it as to why we would like to keep it at 250 feet if you have any questions about that as a board. And obviously, the Board of Supervisors, I'm sure will have plenty of questions about that. This is a smaller project, a lot of utility scale projects, and we fall under shared solar, a lot of times can get confusing as to what, what we are. So, shared solar is a state program that defines what we can do with restrictions. So, we are allowed to go up to five megawatts, whereas utility scale, which goes into the transmission network, can go up to as large as you want. So, you see thousand-plus acre projects, we are gonna be a little over 10 acres. So, our influence on your view shed, the impact on the neighbors, what it might and how it might affect sediment control issues and whatnot, which is certainly a big conversation piece, is certainly gonna be reduced, but certainly, we can't ignore those. So, as a developer, I work very closely with my engineers, with my landowner and everybody else just to make sure that my project, and I own the project, is designed as well as we can. And then, we get later on into specific civil designs and whatnot, and small changes are made. But, at this point in the development, we are very, very clear that we need to keep every facet very much in understanding so that when we get to the end, we are not making major changes, it's just minor tweaks. And so, I'd like to answer any questions that you might have. I do want to leave you with one fun little tidbit. This two-megawatt site, in the first 25 years, is expected to save the citizens of this area around $1.6 million on their energy bill. And how we get to that is how much energy we produce, and then how much savings we can save on average, and that comes out to be about $1.6 million. So, even though we are small and an individual may not see monumental savings, it does add up, it will save the community a lot of money. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you.
So, how does that savings work? I mean, how does that come about?
Absolutely. It's confusing, I won't deny it. So, what happens is, is you get two bills right now. We're working with Dominion to try and get that down to one bill. They are holding up that, we have a program that does work in other states and does work with the same system that they use for billing. We are hoping that we'll see that in '23. So, what happens is, is you get a bill for the amount of electricity that you subscribe to through the solar array, and we can offer that at a lower rate, 10% to 15% on average. And then, you also get a separate bill for the remaining amount of power that you use beyond that, and then also your general costs, because all of us on any of our utilities are paying for the upkeep and other random miscellaneous fees. So, you, right now, you do get two separate bills. We are working with them to hopefully get that down to one bill. Did that answer your question?
So, you're saying that every individual homeowner will, will save money?
What I'm saying is everybody that does subscribe to this. So, this isn't an overall savings across the board. This is, we are producing a certain amount of power, and we, so, we are metered at the point that we hit the distribution network. And so, if we're putting in two megawatts, we can take out two megawatts at a different location, and that can be spread out throughout different areas. That amount can be taken out, and that's the people that would be saving, our subscribers. To answer it?
And I, as an individual homeowner, can subscribe to this plan?
Yeah, so, it's, it's intended and works very well with small businesses, individual homeowners, public buildings. So, courthouse, schools, and whatnot can subscribe. And one of the cool things about a, like, a state-owned business is that they don't pay taxes. So, one of the advantages that a homeowner would get out of, out of doing their own solar is that there is a tax incentive, which was extended with the Inflation Reduction Act. So, we'll see that probably for at least the next five years. A school doesn't get that tax write-off. So, if, if it costs $100 to build a solar array on a school, it costs 100 bucks. There's no savings. On a homeowner, they may see 24, 26, 28, even up to 30% savings in a tax write-off later on. So, they would pay, you know, let's say, $24 less than 100. And so, for like a public building, you can subscribe to this and just get a straight-out savings without any upfront costs. There's a lot to it, it, it-
Take your word for it.
Thank you. There's a lot to it, and it's, it, I, I'm hopefully describing it well, I apologize if I'm not.
Do you have to be within a certain radius of the project to be a subscriber?
Right now, that what they have is, they have adjacent and inside the same county. So, any adjacent counties in this county would be able to benefit from this project. And that's the same thing for any shared solar projects, is that if you had one in Richmond County, you would be able to go to the, all the adjacents, and so on and so forth. So, it does benefit both this county and the adjacent counties. Any other questions?
Taking the ordinance out of, out of play, one of our criteria is location. It's a 76-acre tract, you seem to be trying to do minimal impact before development. Why are you so close on both, not only the highway side, but you're 50 feet from what, and I don't want to use the word ordinance, but a normal setback would be 250 feet for a similar project. And I understand it's a smaller project, and listen, and that's fantastic and everything, but I just was curious as to why it has to be infringing so closely on what are established setbacks? And the location on Route 3 is particularly important to our comp plan?
Yeah, so, this project is a really good example of building an intelligent site to fit within the confines of what we can work with. So, if I go further west, I'm into a wetland. If I go to the north, then I'm, then I'm getting closer to the lot line. If I go further east, I'm getting closer to the road. If I go south, then I'm impacting the landowner and their general use. And so, we're fitting it into the area that we can to try and, I would say maximize the amount that is reasonable for the area while also keeping in understanding of what's reasonable. So, I have a strong opinion, and I'll share it with you, about setbacks versus visual barriers. My eyesight is pretty good. My kid tried to ruin that one night watching Frozen when she poked me, but I still got pretty good eyesight. I can see 1,000 feet away, I can see 100 feet away, I can see 250 feet away. For me, a distance is very much less important than looking at a visual barrier. If you go and walk along a, actually, this, this site's great. If you go and walk along the road or drive by, you'll notice that there's existing trees along the road. And if you drive past there, there's a very good visual barrier because of that. If you drive just a little ways down, there, the trees aren't there anymore, and those, you can see all the way to the back of the woods. And so, it's about 1,250 to 1,500 feet to the back. And so, we're budding almost completely up to where the woods are, where it falls back and turns into a wetland. So, the visual barrier piece of it is gonna make a much larger impact on your view shed of the array on Mary Ball Road than what a larger setback would be. So, I am happy to, and the landowner and I have both talked about this, I would be happy to, when we're approved, I will go in and I will place all the trees along Mary Ball Road to continue that tree line. I'll take out all the trees that are dead, I'll plant new trees to let them start growing now. I don't suspect that we'll actually get to building it till '24. And so, that would give them at least a year to start growing. And I'll work with the local arborist to figure out what trees will be best there so that they'll last as long as possible. Trees don't last forever, so obviously, there may be some need to replace them over time. And we would also be happy to do that. So, I would suggest that adding those trees along the road and then doing your normal seven rows of trees and bushes along with the 250-foot setback should hopefully do a really good job of disrupting your view of the array itself. But that's, again, I think it's just building intelligently as best I can.
Good. Just, I know the board's gonna ask you that question.
Yeah, I know, but the trees have died, because the Leyland cypress planted on there. So, and they, they, they had a hard time.
They were good for a while, then they got planted.
Yeah.
Well, and that's why I want to use a local arborist. I'm not an expert on trees, I won't pretend to be, so I'm gonna contact an expert. I'm working in New Mexico, and I'm working with a national group that deals in seeds, and I'm working with a soil scientist, and we're trying to figure out a seed program that you guys have here in Virginia, that we've worked on in Minnesota. And I'm actually trying to figure out a way to do ground cover in New Mexico. So, we're trying to go up and beyond to do the best that we can. And solar, solar, I can't make it something else, not in my backyard, I totally understand that. But we can still do a good job of designing it so that it has the least, little, to no impact on people.
Thank you.
We recently considered and approved installation on Harris Road. And one of the things they, they talked about in that installation was that they were using a, I don't know, I would call it a low-profile solar, I don't know, what do we call it, installations? They talked about a, a normal one being like 15 feet above the ground at its furthest extension, and the one they were putting in was about seven and a half feet. Looks to me like what you're putting in is also seven and a half feet. Are you putting in the newer low-profile arrays?
I guess I wouldn't call it new, that's our standard. So, we have two different types, we have a fixed tilt, and then one that follows the sun. So, when you look at the plans, if they're going north and south, that's gonna go with the sun. When they're facing towards the south, and those are fixed tilt. So, this one will follow the sun. And this, just as you pointed out, it's only, generally, a lot of the ordinances say that you can go to a maximum of 10. That's never been an issue, we should stay at or below the fence line, which is eight feet.
So, all of yours will be eight feet or less-
Yes.
-above the ground?
Yeah.
At full tilt?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, is-
Sure. That's a good question, I can verify that, my understanding was, but I want to verify it, I want to say that it still fell below that. But sometimes I get my numbers mixed up on, but I do believe, if my memory serves me right, the top of the tilt is around, that's seven and a half or eight feet, which is at or below. But I, I do want to verify that.
I, I think that's right, I, that's what I saw on your diagram, so-
Right.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Mr. Simmons?
Thank you. Good evening. I know this is, seems unusual, okay, we've changed the ordinance, but this was applied for last spring, meets all the requirements of the law as it was at the time. And I think that a lot of work and a lot of money has been spent on this. And in all fairness, you know, some consideration ought to be given to that. It's not like we're coming in here with a new application and saying, hey, we want something that's, that doesn't fit into the ordinance right now. This was long, a long time in the works. And I have to say, one reason that, that I picked IPS was that they'd worked with some people I knew, and they're, they're flexible, I guess you'd say. They were willing to work with me on what I wanted with the property, and they're willing to work with the county as well. Like today, Jesse came in and we started talking about the buffers. And I went down the road this morning, actually took some videos driving down the road of how long you can see, I know that the Leyland cypresses I planted are dying and need to be replaced, but if you have those, if the Leyland cypress are still there, it's about 10 to 15 seconds when you're driving past at road speed. Coming from Kilmarneck, you've got a rise in the hill there, Bunker Hill, and it tapers down, and it, you don't see, you have even, even shorter time to see it coming that way because of the hill and the fact that it's set back. But I wanted more than that, so I talked to Jesse about doing extra rows of buffers up on the road, like the other trees that I had, replacing them, putting other buffers down towards Bunker Hill where there aren't, aren't trees, because they would have the biggest impact on, on hiding anything from the road. And I even agreed that if we needed to, we can put more buffers in front of the old house, coming from the Whitestone side. And he was, he's willing, like I said, he was willing to do that, willing to plant them, if, if we got approval, willing to plant them right away so they can start growing. And as you don't see, like these other projects where they put the whole thing up, and then they plant a bunch of little trees in front of it, and half of them die.
That's true.
And that's what I like about them, they, they're willing to work with it, they, they, they want to do the right thing, they don't want to come in and make a mess. They want to put in, in, you know, flowers for pollinators. I also talked to them about putting in, in, in plantings for, for birds, quails and turkeys and stuff like that as well. And I think that they would do a good job. I think that, I'd like the board, I know you all aren't considering it tonight, but I would hope that the board will consider the fact that this has been in the works for a long time now, and it's well thought out and well planned, and it really will not adversely affect the view shed off of Route 3. I understand y'all's concerns about it, and if I had long, flat fields that you could see long distances across for, for 30 or 40 seconds at a time, I would, it would be a different matter, I think. But I think that the issues that the county has with seeing it along Route 3 can easily be taken care of. They even talked about putting in an escrow to, to make sure that the trees stay alive. If the trees die and they don't come in and take care of it, then they could be, you know, it could be enforced by the county that they could replant new trees. And that's the kind of things I like about them and what they're doing. And, you know, this farm's been in my family for over 100 years, it's a registered century farm with Virginia. And we've been, been there, my mother was born there. I want to be able to keep the place, and frankly, you know, things, times are gonna be tight. I've got a 10-year-old I've gotta put through college. And I would love to be able to count on this to, to do some of that with, and not have to sell the land. You know, the land is in the Comprehensive Plan growth area. I mean, it's, it's something that somebody could take and, and, and come in and apply for high-density housing or even, even commercial along the road. And this really would keep it more in more of a, of a natural and uncluttered state than other things that could be done with it. And the other thing, if, if you don't do this, and I could go in and I could cut all, all the forest down, all those big oaks and the things that feed all the animals, cut them down like everybody else and plant a pine forest in there, plant thicket.
Leyland cypress?
Yeah, I really, I don't want to do that, I'd like, rather have, keep what I've got and use the, use the land. It's not particularly great land, it's one, one crop a year. It's not good farmland by any stretch of the imagination. And this would give a chance to have something that would put more taxes in the county coffers than the 1,700 bucks a year you get out of me. And I don't even quite get that much out of the farmer. So, I, if y'all have any questions of me, I'd be glad to take them, but-
You, to me, you bring up two, two good points, it is in the PGA area. And it probably could be zone heavier, density, possibly even commercial. What is the project right next to it called that Woodard's doing? That sour, sour-
Reserve at Lake Chase is what he has approved.
Those are larger acre lots, but how, you know, how many of the are on top of your-
Larger is relative.
Yeah, it's at least 110, I believe, in there.
Wow.
And I, I planted different trees, Thujaplicata over there on that fence line that survived even under the, under the black walnut trees to block that, in my view, from that, but-
And the third, third point you brought up to me that resonated is the fact you did start this process before the, the, whatever's been changed, has been changed, I feel for you on that. Question for you is, it's a very small percent of the 70 acres, what is it, 7% of whatever it's gonna be? Plus or minus? What is your plan with the rest of it? Are you gonna- Are you gonna come back and ask for more solar powers?
No. I don't think it's, I don't think it's feasible. For one, you've got the setbacks. The two, I don't want to cut the woods. And even if you did, I don't think it would be viable because you have the sort of, I don't know, ditches, I guess, that got, that head towards the ponds at Bunker Hill and all, that when it rains a lot, they have, have water in them. So, I don't think that would be viable. Across the road is not enough or, as I say, they never, they never expressed any interest in it. I don't think anybody wants it because it's not big enough. And you've got those tall trees along there that block the sun. I don't think that's enough sun.
You're talking to the left of the house?
Yeah, well, to, on, on the east side of the road. See, I own the east and the west side of the, of Route Three there.
Opposite side of the road.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I thought you were talking about what-
Yeah, so on this side of the road, I mean, I've got thirty-five acres total in cultivation right now. And the rest of it's in woods. It's split on both sides of the road. So, the, the west side of the road is, is limited. You know, most of the land's over there, probably two-thirds over there, one-third on the east side. But because it's split in half, you know, the, the setbacks take out anything on the other side of the road as far as, as solar. And there's no other place really to put it on, on the west side of the road. So, this is, this is the only thing they could do with it. And it's pressed back in the corner as far as they can get it. So, there will be no, no further requests for additional solar on that farm.
My question. Any other questions for Mr. Simmons?
I appreciate y'all's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a, and I probably shouldn't ask you, but I mean, that, that land on the other side, that doesn't count for anything, does it? Wouldn't be able to count for anything. All right. Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay. Glenn, do we have anybody online?
Uh, there's not one attendee.
Okay. That, I'll start with if, if the attendee online would like to be a part of the public hearing. There's a raise your hand option, is that correct? Yes. And if anyone else wants to come up and voice their opinion or concerns, please step forward, state your name and your district. Yes, sir?
Charlie Castello, District Two. I know I'm not close to where you live, Raleigh, or did. But I liked the reference to Bunker Hill. As a Yankee, Bunker Hill is something different than what you were talking about. Raleigh has already mentioned the fact that his property, the seventy-six acres, is split by Route Three. I was gonna mention that too. And the portion on the opposite side is outside the primary growth area, if you want to get technical about it. Because the, the boundaries on that growth area is Route Three. So, when you hear seventy-six acres, it's not all. It's just this portion over here. Now, I had some questions on, it's back here. Two megawatts. When I hear two megawatts and I think of the Waller program, that was sixteen acres. Each megawatt was, we were told, required eight acres. Remember that? I do. But that's what, the way they defined and why they need all those acres to put in the hundred megawatt site. Now, we hear two. That's the panels, eight feet. Now, is that a single panel or is that two? Is it one panel that tilts? Or is it eight feet? An eight feet? I don't know. But that's some questions that you ought to be considering. Now, as it applies to the comprehensive plan, I don't think the comprehensive plan envisioned solar at that time. And we've made the changes to the comprehensive plan. And that's been in there for some time. So, it's got to conform to that. And I do know that the supervisors turned down the Mary Ball Solar, which is gonna be up there by VDOT. And that was almost the same size project as what you get right now. And it was under the same, it was actually before some of this application that you heard of. Because that discussion took place back in, what, May, June, April?
It was February.
February. So, this is a fit. And I wonder if this really does conform to the comprehensive plan for Lancaster County. I would take serious thought before you go ahead and, and approve it, recommending that this go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Castello. Anybody else have anything they'd like to offer before we close the public hearing portion? Guess we're good? Nobody? Okay. Okay. What do you guys think? Public hearing portion is not closed. What do you guys think? Taking the ordinance out, I mean, like Don, Mr. Gill says.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Going on what Mr. Castello said, it's up to the board of supervisors, I believe, to make the final decision. Everything's heard on a, heard for their own worth to the board. Everything's different. I don't think it's proper for us to say, no, it's not going there because the last one was voted out, kicked out. I actually thought this one's a little bit further back, to be honest with you. But having heard what they've said, first of all, you did apply for it or it was in the process long before. And I'm sure there's a lot of money out there. The other side of it is that what you offered is to putting up the extra trees, the extra rows, to, to buffer it, to make it. It looks to me like they've gone out of there, or they're going out of their way. They're willing to go out of their way to make sure that it's not seen. But it seems like we've got this ordinance out there. And now that we've got it, we either can't get it right or nobody wants it once it's out here. It seems to me that this sort of fits in with what we're, with the comprehensive plan. And it'd be up to the board supervisors at their discretion to decide whether it should stay or whether it should go. It seems to me it fits, is what I'm trying to say.
And that's primarily what Don has booked, booked on.
What he's told us to do, to figure out whether we think it fits.
If it fits within our comprehensive plan. Absolutely. Well stated.
Yeah. To respond to Mr. Castello's point about not conforming with the comprehensive plan because the comprehensive plan at the time they introduced this didn't mention solar installations. I think that means it, it conformed exactly with it. I mean, if, if the comprehensive plan at the time had said, had set down a, a lot of conditions and, and parameters for a solar field and this didn't meet it, why, that would be one thing. But it, it had no prohibition against solar fields. And in my opinion, what they presented as far as the, the current comprehensive plan, which does mention solar, I find that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. As far as the location, it does allow solar installations along Route Three. The character of it seems consistent with every other solar installation we've seen and better in some respects. I, I think the fact that they have a low-profile solar array is a plus. And the extent of it's very exceedingly modest. So, I'm ready to propose that we forward this to the board of supervisors with a recommendation for approval because we find it consistent in all three of those respects with our comprehensive plan.
Well said. Thank you, Dave. Would you guys like to add anything before?
I agree with Stephen, Dave. I think they're going a little-
Mr. Dab, what agrees? Uh, well put for you gentlemen. I, I would agree too.
We have a little bit of heartburn. So, I'm just out of curiosity. How many other properties are out there started that we're gonna keep not going with what we've said is now in our comprehensive plan because they started before it changed?
There's only one left.
Okay. Because I think that that's an important thing to consider.
And that one is not on Route Three. That one is actually on a secondary road.
Okay. I do struggle a little bit on page six nineteen where it says the main road raised, main roadways defined by the highway quarter overlay district ordinance should have extra consideration and distance for buffering from scenic impacts. I think it's too close, but I respect what you all are saying. But I, you know, I look at this and, and it's to scale. And you look at the width of Route Three from side to side on this map, and that's like the same distance it is from the road. Like, it's right there. I have a little struggle.
Well, in your recommendation, if you mind having heartburn, stating that, that the board should place emphasis and look at the setbacks?
No, I definitely think they should look at that.
I know they want to.
I mean, this should not be immune from our current requirements. But we're not supposed to consider that, so.
Exactly. Well, we've got a motion on the, on the floor to favor, or to forward this to the board of supervisors with favorable recommendation per the review, which is a, hang on, what is it, um, fifteen, twenty? Twenty-two?
Thirty-two.
Twenty-two, thirty-two?
Yeah. It, I, I think most attorneys would, would like for the motion to state that you all find the project to be substantially in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
I was going there.
Okay.
With that said, building on what Mr. Chaff said, we've got a motion on the floor to forward our review, our twenty-two, thirty-two review to the board of supervisors with favorable consideration based on its compliance with our existing comprehensive plan. Is that what you wanted? Is there anything else I can add with him?
Well, are we, are we recommending it only if it's consistent with the current requirements?
Based on our review of the comprehensive plan, yes. It meets the three criteria.
So, that might preclude the board from considering less setbacks?
No.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't? Okay.
Okay. Is everybody up to speed? Favorable review, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Thank you all.
What was your vote, Mr. Chairman?
Aye. Okay. Mr. Simmons, you might want to convert this to Cliff Notes before you go to the board of supervisors. I know. Just a little small opinion.
You all will get it by laptop.
I didn't read every line of it.
All right. Thank you all for your input. Thank you. We have no consideration items and we have two discussion items. The comp plan review, chapter seven, and short-term rental issues and possible zoning ordinance amendment to address those issues. I would like to, we have some, some folks in attendance that want to address number two. So, if it's okay with the commission, we'll move the short-term rental conversation up before the comp plan conversation?
Couldn't move.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell, who's, who's gonna present this issue to us?
I'll, I'll start it off and, and Bill can jump in. This issue was first brought to the planning commission last month at the direction of the board of supervisors. Back in 2018, the board of supervisors, like a lot of other counties in the state, adopted a short-term rental registry ordinance and also a transient occupancy tax for Lancaster County. And since that time, that original registry had about ten, ten units on it. Since that time, that number has grown substantially. And now, last count was like fifty-
We're at sixty-seven now.
We're at sixty-seven now. And that's the ones that we know about. That, you know, the ones who have voluntarily come forward and registered or the ones that Bill has, has found in his search of different Airbnb websites. You know, there could be others out there. That's also only the ones that are within the county of Lancaster jurisdiction. It doesn't count the ones that are within incorporated towns. So, this issue has really, has really blown up. And not coincidentally, but because it has blown up, the number of complaints that have, that we have fielded has, has blown up as well. And they usually deal with, you know, parties and noise, the number of people on the property, trespass and trash, as Mr. Lee called me today and said that he had gotten a complaint about trash. So, we, the board decided that we needed to do something. They decided to send the issue back to the planning commission to, to get you all's input on it. Last month, you all requested that staff research other counties' ordinances and, and staff reports so that you all could read through. And maybe, maybe we could find something here and there from different localities that we could strengthen our ordinance with. Bill had some, some assistance from some community residents who helped him, provided a few of these for him in addition to the ones that he researched on his own. And I spent some time this afternoon going through these a little more in-depth. And the one thing that struck me, several things struck me, but the one thing right off the bat is that all of these are requiring a special exception or a conditional use permit. Currently, we do not. That special exception or conditional use permit process, it's the same thing. Different counties call it different, different things. We call it a special exception. That special exception process involves a public hearing, adjoining property owner notification prior to authorization being given to operate. And all of the examples that are in here require that. There's some other things that, that, you know, stuck out in my mind that other jurisdictions have that we currently do not, that maybe we all should consider. And, you know, just a few of those things are, you know, limiting the number of rentals per week. Some of these have one rental per week. I saw two, two at the most. A lot of these limit the number of overnight guests based on health department approvals, permitting. Some even limit the number of total guests on the site. Some also limit, you know, or ban outdoor fires, ban events such as weddings or things of that nature. You know, these are things that, that maybe we should consider as well. Some even go so far as to say that the property owner must, must be physically present on site during the rental. That may be a little extreme, but that's, that's out there as well. So, you know, not, not looking for any type of decision tonight. This is gonna, this is something that's gonna take some time and some thought. But a couple of things, the, the one main thing that jumped out at me is that most counties, or everyone here, and most that I'm aware of now, are looking at gaining some regulatory control of these short-term rentals through their zoning ordinance. And we currently do not have that. And so, that is, that's why this issue is before you for consideration and discussion. And I know that there are some people here as well. Mr. Chairman, it would be up to you if you would allow any public input or not. That, that's your choice. There will all, there will certainly be a public hearing at some point in time when your recommendations will be heard. And there would also be a public hearing at the board of supervisors level for any amendments to the, to the zoning ordinance or code of ordinances related to this.
Can I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a quick question? If we were to require special exceptions, would the ones who are registered now be grandfathered in or would everybody have to come in for a special exception?
I know what my preference would be, I'm not an attorney, I'm not an attorney, so I'm going to withhold that until I have a chance to discuss that with the county attorney.
When you were researching this, like, what was the capacity number as far as, like a three-bedroom house, how many people could you have?
So, what you find in a, I'm sorry? No, go ahead, go ahead. What you find in a lot of these ordinances is they said two adults and one child, per bedroom, per bedroom. There were some that had more, but that was, I would say, the consistent number. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a disclaimer, we did get many calls this week about public input and the citizens were advised that it was not, we weren't going to allow public input, so I just want you to know that for the citizens that didn't come because they didn't think they could speak.
Fair enough, but that doesn't negate the fact I can still have talk.
You know, he's telling you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
People will call in the lobby.
Why didn't I let? I get it, but thanks for the heads up.
One of the things on the special exception, and you asked a question out of the way, but going, I guess, is that a separate thing that we would have to take up outside of it, although the changes we make?
That would have to be amendments to whichever zoning ordinance articles.
Yes, that's what I was.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you all wanted a special exception, say in A2 and R1, then we would have to hold public hearings to amend both of those ordinances to allow short-term rentals with special exception. We'd also have to amend their definition article to include a definition of short-term rental.
What I was thinking while I was asking that question because if we separated it, maybe that's something we could do pretty quick, you know? I say quick, you know?
Yeah.
Had a public hearing and then we got, that's something we can move forward because we know we want that piece.
Right.
We want that piece in there. So, we could say, okay, we're going to do this and have the public hearing, you know, next month or whatever month it is, but they're having all the other regulations in place. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. You could get that part of it out there.
Is that going to be a bureaucratic nightmare for the board for the special exception? Special exceptions don't come through us, correct?
No, special exceptions don't come to the Planning Commission.
This is something I think we need, I think we need this because this hopefully gives a better handle on how many is where they are.
Yeah.
Hopefully. And give the people in that neighborhood a chance to speak up because they would, adjacent neighbors would be notified.
Yeah.
So, that's why I was wanting that part of it, we can.
Yeah, I mean, it could, yeah, it could be done that way. If the recommendation is to include other regulations such as limiting the number of overnight guests or limiting the total guests or ban, you know, prohibiting events or outdoor fires or anything of that nature, those, I think those things would be in the code of ordinances as opposed to specific zoning districts. So, yeah.
Yeah, like you, I spent quite a bit of time researching all, and I emphasize the word, all of the documentation that was provided in the packet before you guys feel the same way. And the one thing that was pretty running through that was consistent with all of them was, I didn't like either one of them entirely, but, you know, that was just my thoughts. I mean, some people, like Fairfax County, they've gone out of algorithms and all kinds of stuff. I mean, it was just mind-boggling. And then, as I was sharing with you, Don, it's like, well, how do you really grapple with this in a small county? You know, you can say you want to give a business license or you can say you want to issue special exemptions or you want to limit it, et cetera, et cetera. But let's be honest, it's going to be almost impossible to enforce. So, but again, there are, in my research, I did find there's actually two companies that work collectively with county governments and you stated they were on a contract basis, that was back in 2018, that may have changed now.
Yeah.
As they try to just work for back taxes that they, that these quote-unquote businesses would be required to pay. That's a certain avenue administratively, we could, we could keep an eye, not an eye, but keep a grip on what's going on and get a, you know, let's be honest, these guys have been freeloaded for a long time because they're not paying any boarding or lodging tax back to the county. I mean, what did they pay, like a $200 fee? And that's all they get?
Well, it's a $500 fine for not registering.
No, 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 maybe for registering.
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, yeah. I mean, that's all, then that's all the county gets. So, there's got to be some tax benefits if the county decides to move forward with that. We got to, we got to tax.
Yeah, we, and just, just.
Two percent of the.
Yeah, two percent, two percent of the lodging bill, but just for reference, in 2021, and this is FY '21, the lodging tax generated $7,741.68 to Lancaster County. In FY '22, $6,051.74 and the registry fees were $1,300 in FY '22. So, it's not, it's not a whole lot of money, but what you can't quantify is the amount of money that those folks spend at Walmart, TriStar, restaurants all around the county. There's no way to put a number on that. So, there's, you know, even though the tax money, tax revenue is not impressive, I guess, probably the total dollar effect to the economy would be more impressive.
And let's be honest, I mean, so they registered, do you think that, I mean, we have no way of auditing their income?
That's very true.
I mean, that seems like a paucally amount because people I talked to that have these things are kicking in a lot more money than that.
Oh, yeah.
At least, they may be bragging, it's like the guy that always wins gambling, I don't know. But that's just one way to look at it administratively, unless the county hires a position, I mean, we're sort of just back to square one if we can't enforce anything as far as these, you know, implementation.
And that's the problem, I think, some of the things against enforcement side of it.
But that's, that's one way to look at it with this outside company that would work with the county to see who's actually renting, who's advertising and how often they're booked. So, that's, again, that's not an answer, but it's just something that I saw. I liked what you said, Don, about the limit on the people, but to expand on that a little bit, it was two persons and I saw about the child as well. But the bedroom count has to be based on health department, certainly not what someone's advertising because they can advertise closets as bedrooms for God's sakes. Other good thing is that these houses had to have, if we didn't go the route of living, you know, boarding with them, there has to be a local contact that can be, that can be there within a certain amount of time if he lives locally.
And I saw that too, and I was, I like the one that said, in sixty minutes. Because, you know, someone responsible had to be there in sixty minutes. That was one of the complaints I got yesterday, no one called, who you've been called.
Yeah, so you limit that and you limit parking, you know, certain things like that, you know, on, only on the, in the driveway that's allowable. I mean, these are just little things I picked up. Quiet time, that was a big thing, you know, as far as how you wanted to do that. Pets, introducing them, they have to be on a leash if they're with, I mean, I don't know how you enforce it, fenced yards, I don't know. No pets? You know, the tax issue, I don't know how we're going to work through that. But one thing that I saw that was kind of clever is the county, and the county can do this if we're going to go that permit option, is we can make any new purchasers wait one year to apply for an application to do, to rent their house out or whatever. So, you take away investors off the back. I don't, I don't know. Yeah, but I mean, that's, that's an easy one to do if we're going to go the special exception route. They just can't come in and buy it and turn around and rent it out. There'd probably be a little more invested interest in it.
It may take a year to get the special exception through anyway, so.
That's true too. But those are just kind of what I saw. You know, like I said, I didn't see anything that was perfect. You know, the other thing is you say no, but you can't really say no to catch out of the bag, in my opinion, but I mean, that's up to the board.
The one thing I would think of a day after, after the call, is events and visitors, one of these had, so many people, you had to come and get a special permit if you were going to hold an event down. And I, I think that's probably a good one, if they had to, if there was going to be an event, you know, wedding reception or something like that, you didn't have a special permit to hold that, that event.
Or just don't allow special ones, I mean, you could go that route, save that for the commercial businesses.
I saw one of them too.
I guess that'd be one of the conditions, I guess.
I saw one of them too, where they had them, they make sure that they posted emergency numbers and the ordinance itself, so that way the people coming in can't say we didn't know because the ordinance is posted inside the residence.
Right, right, correct. Yeah, I mean, all of this is for not if it's not going to be enforced, I mean, let's be honest. You can be on the books all you want to, but people will be impressed.
Yeah.
But I mean, I understand if y'all were tasked with getting something on the books. Those are just some of my observations in addition to what you had said, Don.
Did you get a chance to look at that lease law?
I did not. It's a timeframe, certain times of the year, maybe September, May to September? Okay.
May to September?
May to September.
The dogs are supposed to be on lease?
Yeah, even in, even in the county jurisdiction, yeah.
Really?
Really, these people are, you know, they are compliant right here.
Yeah.
I didn't know that, I'm under compliance all the time. Yeah, right. So, those are just my two cents. What do you guys think? What did y'all have?
You covered everything, I circled on all the different ordinances, all the different things I liked.
I mean, enforcement, tell me, tell me what you guys think. I mean, we're not going to hire somebody who's going around wearing VRBOs, I know that.
No.
You guys got enough when you played, everybody in the administration's got.
Yes, I'm not sure why these complaints are going to the board, I mean.
So, you're not sure why?
No. It seems to me that this kind of complaint, behavior complaints, loud parties, revelry, trespassing, complaints on that kind of thing should go to the police department. And the police department, even if they don't issue a citation, should make some kind of record of it and it should be kept.
Yeah, and that's other things, three strikes you're out.
And if there are three of these records, why the board can consider taking away their right to do this. But I don't understand why all these complaints are going to the board. People, people don't, I mean, if people hear gunshots or there's a fight going on or whatever, are they calling you about that?
Yes.
Maybe you're good at it, though. Anyway, that's my thought.
Well, I think law enforcement has been called several times to some of these, so.
And the other thing is, I saw, I was talking to Farrell before, it says, three strikes you're out, three reports you're out. If I get called to go over there and tell you to turn your music down, there's no, there's no report that's made.
Right, right.
So, it would have to come up as call for service to that address and you'd have to go over to communications, see how many times somebody's been at this residence, what for, and look it up that way, but it's not going to be a report, maybe just because you're arguing with, you know, Ty and, you know.
Why you get a point of me? So, that leads us back to the same point, I mean, what recourse? That to me seems to be the biggest thing because all the regulations.
Enforcement is going to be big, but the list that Don has over there, you put that together and put it on paper and then we can, we can say, okay, we can go with these, these things, you know, and have public hearing, whatever we need to have on them. And we can get that out to these people that own them, they can post them inside their place or whatever. And then, you know, the other thing we can do is rely on them to report it or whatever, the neighbors to report and, you know, because we don't have enough patrol people to.
No.
Be going around, you know, checking on, making sure everybody's.
And then the other thing is like, well, what's to say, I'll go back at you, let's just say Steve has a VRBO and he doesn't want to talk to the county and he's over there VRBing it like it's nobody's big deal, I mean, who stops that?
Well, I mean, if a complaint is made, then we have to see if he's registered and if he's not, then we go down that road to.
So, there has to be some sort of penalty?
Yeah, it is, if you're not registered, it's $500.
And we can't reuse that.
Steve charges that, don't they?
That's right.
Yeah, well.
We can't reuse that.
The $500 is state code, so.
Well, the other, I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, it's crazy, I know.
Something as I was, I saw in one of these, they make them, when you put it on Airbnb or VRBO or wherever you put it at, they made them put their register number on it. I was talking to Farrell a while ago, giving, what if we had, I'm just making this stuff up, I get, when you register, you get number 222. When you advertise on any one of these places, you have to put registration number 222, or Lancaster 222, whatever you put. And that way, if somebody was looking, say, Don didn't have nothing to do one day, he's in his office like, I'm usually just doing nothing. He wants, just looking for pewter and he's looking for Lancaster VRBO and he comes up, well, this one doesn't have a registration of it. Well, now he's got something, but to your point, what you were talking about with these other companies that do this kind of stuff, well, they would be the ones that research it. Well, why doesn't, why, why doesn't this one have a number, a registration number? That means they're not registered, whereas the others are registered because they got a number that goes with it.
Exactly.
Don, didn't we, three years back, looking to?
We did. It was a company called Host Compliance, which is like the leader in this, and if I remember right, and don't quote me in the paper, Don, this jacket, but if I remember right, we got a quote from them, and I want to say it was like $50,000 to $60,000 a year to do that. And when you're only getting $15,000 per year in tax revenue and you can't quantify the other economic benefit, I mean, it's hard to justify spending that.
It may have gone down by now.
What else has gone down in the last three years?
Now, you got to go there.
You know, it's up to you all, but I would like to see you move forward with special exceptions, you know, get that rolling, build and, you know, do all that.
So, you.
Different.
In all districts?
Yeah, well, what, what's W1? Like, I don't know.
Well, the, you know, it would make sense, I think, that something of this nature would be probably permitted by right in a commercial district, but I think in all the residential districts, the agricultural districts, you could add short-term rental with a special exception.
But our commercial?
Maybe not our four.
We don't allow residential homes in commercial, so why are we allowed VRBOs?
Well, because they're more like a hotel or something of that nature.
But like all the people that call me, they're commercial.
I would agree, I mean.
Call me, y'all are lying, commercial.
Yeah, I mean, what's the definition of commercial, making money?
Yeah.
That's what they're doing.
Well, and then there are some localities, Supreme Court in, what did I tell you, South Dakota deemed it residential.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Dave, what are your thoughts?
I have a lot of thoughts and I gave considerable thought to this over the past week. I attach a lot of importance to this subject. I think we can get into a lot of trouble with it. First of all, we're talking about a basic property right, the right of a homeowner to rent his property. And I think it's a very big step to turn a decision on whether or not he can do that over to the neighbors at a public hearing. So, I, I think, you know, the fact that it's a basic property right is critical, it's also become a big part of our economic life in this country. Ten or fifteen years ago, it wasn't true. Today, it's bringing in a lot of money into our community, some of it to older folks who are hurt by inflation and are maybe keeping their homes because of what they can bring in with short-term rentals. are maybe keeping their homes because of what they can bring in with short-term rentals. We're not talking about small amounts of money. I mean, we had a family reunion a couple of months ago where we had too many kids and grandkids to all stay at our house, so two of our kids from out of town rented a, a, a house in Irvington, and it was seven hundred and fifty bucks a night. So they, they're, this, uh, this is bringing in a lot of money into the area. Short-term rentals have become a, a factor in people's decision to buy homes, especially with younger people. You know, they, they may be able to afford a home, um, because of the possibility of, of renting out an extra room or whatever. So it's become an important decision in real estate. And then I've talked before about the, the fact that in a tourist area like this, we have people, you know, a retirement-aged couple from Fairfax comes down, stays in a short-term rental along the water here, sees what a nice lifestyle it is, and they start talking with the host of the short-term rental. They're the best salesmen in the, in the world for, for selling this area and the lifestyle they're living, and I'm confident that's bringing a lot of retirees into our area. Retirees with, uh, monthly, uh, annuities, or bringing their monthly, uh, annuities, their bank accounts, they're buying homes, building homes. Big factor. So I think we have to be extremely careful about, uh, what we do with this. I've, uh, I, I came up with what I consider a, a, a good system that would take care of, I think, a lot of the problems that we're seeing without substantially cutting back on, uh, on these short-term rentals, which I think, as you can see, are an asset for the, the county. What, what I, what I thought about was dividing short-term rentals into two basic categories. The first would be the residential people, the people who host, host the rental, it's while they're living in, live in the property. They're not absentee folks, and I would define that as people who reside in the property at least a hundred and eighty-five days a year. Which would mean that, uh, you could be in this category and go to Florida for two to three months in the winter, whatever. But you'd have to reside there at least a hundred and eighty-five days. And the folks in this category would, uh, have to get a license, and they would apply to the county for the license. I'd propose a cost of like, uh, eight hundred dollars, and the license would be good for two years. The license would be an administrative deal. There might be some requirements as far as what the host property would have to have and that sort of thing, but there would not be a public hearing. A public hearing for most of these casual, part-time people is out of the question. They're not gonna subject themselves to their neighbors' views on this proposal. So as far as some of the other requirements for this category, there would be a, a maximum of ninety nights a year when they could host a guest. And of course, that limit could be set anywhere. In Fairfax, they set it at sixty nights a year. Uh, I think that's a little light, but anyway. An owner or his designated representative would have to be available within thirty minutes by telephone and be there, actual presence within sixty minutes, anytime they were hosting a guest. No events would be allowed. They, they couldn't have family reunions, that sort of thing. Have to keep a detailed guest log. We could, I think we should have some safety requirements. Most of the other ordinances do, smoke alarms, that sort of thing. Maybe a limit on the number of, of lodgers based on the number of bedrooms. So that would be the, the residential licensing category. The other category would be the folks who don't live in the house, basically, occupy it less than a hundred and eighty-five days a year. They would have to obtain a short-term, uh, residence permit from the county, which would involve a public hearing. And we could charge like two thousand dollars for a permit, good for two years. But there would be a public hearing, uh, and this would be new applicants as well as existing applicants who have a record as far as their neighbors. It would involve both. There would be no limit on the number of nights that they could host a tenant. So it's more of a business operation. But it's still a business in a residential area, so we should have these other requirements. And it would be subject to all the other requirements I, I, uh, I mentioned for the, the other category. So that would be a basic system. The crux of it is, it avoids a public hearing for the casual, short-term renter.
That's onsite.
Who lives onsite. He's hosting people in his house. Most of the problems, in my opinion, are with the non-residential, short-term renters, who don't live here maybe at all, or whatever. Some other considerations that I think we have to take into account, whether or not we need a separate bed and breakfast category. I, I don't see any reason for having.
No, I mean, we, we already have bed and breakfast listed in our zoning ordinance.
I know.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't.
The question is whether we, what's the difference? I mean, the only difference is that, uh, a bed and breakfast can serve a breakfast. In my requirements, I don't say that they can't serve food. A couple of other municipalities do say that. I see no reason to restrict that. The ones I've stayed at, uh, you know, the breakfast is a big part of the, the hosting. We need to have a written list of behavior, expectations at, at STRs, and we need to convey these to the, the people who are doing it, and to the police, and, uh, and we need to have the police make some kind of written reference to the, the cases that they think are severe enough to, to maybe warrant taking away somebody's right to do this. I'm not talking about every little loud noise thing you go to. Most of them shouldn't matter. Anyway. Anyway, that's, that's my thoughts on it. But it, it is a, I think, uh, uh, something that's, that's critical to the county and the economic, uh, well-being of the county. Didn't used to be that way. This is only in the last four or five years.
No, no.
Nobody saw this.
In the example, first example that you gave, Dave, for the hosted, uh, site. And you said if that couple left and went to Florida for two months, so during that two-month time when they're in Florida, they would not be renting their house here out for short-term rental?
They, they could.
Well, didn't you say that, uh, that they, they had to be available within thirty minutes by phone and physically present within sixty minutes?
In any of these, the owner or an officially designated, designate.
Alright, so, 'cause I, I remember when I went through it, I, I remember something like you're talking about, one was called hosted, and one was called unhosted. And, uh, I mean, that's, that's a thought.
Not a bad way of looking at it, really.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Chubb, you touched on it in the beginning of your statement about restricting, uh, property owners' abilities on his property. Just keep in mind, uh, anything, uh, wetlands board, adjacent property owners have input. To put a pier on your property, adjacent property owners have input. To do in addition to encroach further setbacks, adjacent property owners have input. Just keep that in mind, and other things that we do have in, on the books now in the ordinance. I get it, right now it's just short-term rental, but there are other things that adjacent property owners have the capability to have input.
Thank you, thanks for your input, Dave. Yeah, something not to tread in quickly, I can tell you that.
I think that we need to have a, a few rules and regulations, because like, if Dave, if Steve comes down and he gets on me about the music, well, guess what, I'm leaving in two days. I don't really care what Steve says. But I can't come down and rent the house behind you. It convenes you for a whole week. I mean, the blame needs to fall on the property owners. Like you said, it has to be a certain amount of strikes. They need to list the rules and regulations on the website, because most of these people know what type of neighborhood they're buying the property, and most people that are going to Florida for four months are not Airbnb-ing their house. You know, so we're not talking about that, this is a business. Most of these people are buying these houses to Airbnb them all year. I mean, it's good to bring money here, it's good to bring people here. We want people to come here and see the, 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 the town, but let's not forget, the town is made by the people. The what, the reason why it's like this here is because of the people here, you know? I raised four sons here, best place I could've raised them, and people love to come down here with the peace and quiet. But if Ms. Wilson is over here, and she's been here for eighty years, guess what, she's in bed at seven-thirty. You can't just come in and, you, you have to be respectful.
Yes.
You know, and we need to have something that, that, because the people that rent are never gonna care what you say. They're gonna try and do what they wanna do, and they're gonna leave and go back home. It's gotta be the property owner's gotta be responsible. They need to have a, a certain set of something for their guests. You know, yeah, because we, we have to still, we have to still take in, even though it's bringing in money and people, we have to take it accountable to the people that are already here. We gotta respect them. And like you said, it's a lot of older people, you know?
Right, and that's, that's why I put a limit on the number of nights that, uh, that they could do it. For the, I'm talking about the...
Well, see, the limit is already, it's, it's what, no more than thirty days?
Yeah, no more than thirty days.
So that is the limit. But what I'm saying is, like you were saying about the trash, I mean, there's no reason if you're renting a house out there, you can't pay somebody five extra bucks to come in the house to get your gas, just to keep peace in the neighborhood. You know, little stuff like that.
Yeah.
I mean, nobody's against anybody being well-off or making money and, and, and being comfortable, but you still gotta kind of respect the people around you.
Kind of what?
You gotta respect the people around you.
Yes.
You know, it's people that have been in that neighborhood forever, and you just come in and buy a house, that's your right.
Yes.
It's your money, but you have to respect the people around you.
Yes, and, you know, we're talking about, I think, in ninety-five percent of the cases, we're talking about residential neighborhoods. And we have to...
I mean, the police officers don't have time to run down there every ten minutes. They just don't. I mean, the homeowner has to set something, you know?
Yes. I, I don't think we really realize how much of this is going on now with no problems. I mean, we're getting a few problems, but, uh, I mean, we have problems with homeowners misbehaving, having loud parties.
I think you're, I agree with you on that. I think that there have been a handful of complaints, there's sixty-seven houses that are doing this that we know of, there are a lot more.
Yes.
We've had a handful of complaints, but I think the majority of it is not an issue. I agree.
So always a couple rotten apples.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to hear from some, not a public here, I'd just like to hear from some of you guys.
Yes.
Tell us, are we thinking the right way? I don't believe any of us living next to any of these rotten apples, for lack of a better term, so I just, what, tell us, tell us kind of something maybe we can focus on moving forward, if anybody would, I mean.
Who you talking to?
Yeah, or anybody, I'm just, just curious, uh, you know? Again, no public hearing, just, just.
There's a few things, um, with the rentals. I happen to have a verbo next door to me, and I've had nothing but problems. It's a three-bedroom, as far as the health department's gone, it's concerned. They've had as many as twenty-four people in there for, for a week. I've had the septic alarm going off for three days straight. I have dogs coming in and crapping in the yard. I have a trespassing sign up, and they look at it and walk onto our property. It's not good. Obviously, you do not live next to a rental.
Actually, I do.
Well, it's, I've had problems, nothing but problems. Uh, I've had people on our pier fishing at eleven o'clock at night. We've gone down there and approached them, and they say, you want us to leave? If something happened to them, they're gonna sue me, even though I've got a no trespassing sign up. It's also lit at night. The traffic, you don't know who these people are, where they're coming from. They could be rapists, they could be felons, they could be anybody. There's no vetting of these people who are renting. As for the comment of more income to the county because of the rentals and people, if the houses were occupied, it wouldn't be, you would not have any additional income with these rentals. Uh, we just had it, um, traffic. The people of Lancaster County who have been here, I've only been here thirty-three years, but it's not the same. I should not have to police my property. I've talked to the police department, I've talked to the health department. The police department says, call, we'll come down, and if they're on your property, we'll arrest them. Well, those people aren't waiting for the police department to get there. I have called, and I'm gonna call every single time someone steps on our property. They gave them a citation, not, not, they didn't arrest them, gave them a warning about trespassing on our property. That doesn't do anything. No one's policing it. Took half an hour, forty-five minutes for the police to get there, and it will probably take longer. What do you, what am I to do as a resident of this community and loving this community? I shouldn't have to worry about someone coming up, they've been on our patio, they've used our beach chairs. I shouldn't live like that. My wife is livid, and I'm afraid she's gonna have a breakdown. I really am. And I do think you should take the residents of this community before people who are renting these houses. Person that rents our house lives in Charlottesville, paid nine hundred thousand dollars for it. He doesn't need the income. And you've got investment firms that are buying up properties and renting them out. They've got nothing but money on their minds and their businesses. They have a product they're selling, and they're collecting money for it, and you can't tell me a rental property isn't a business. Legally, you've got lawyers who will twist all kinds of things and make it, well, this is the way I interpret it. I'm sorry, the properties that are down in our community, in our residential community, almost every deed states at all times to be used for residential use only, no commercial, no business enterprise. That was done in the fifties. I'm pretty sure they meant that there should not be any rental property on that piece of property. So y'all, y'all talked about most of the things we, I'm experiencing, but it's, it's been bad. That I get up at eleven o'clock at night and see someone down on my pier. Who's gonna do something about it?
Well, I think that's, that's what we're talking about. Well, I think that's, that's what we're talking about.
No, y'all are talking about, y'all need something with teeth. Y'all need to think about the residents in Lancaster County that are experiencing the things I'm experiencing. Y'all say it's not very many, it's a lot. You want, you want public input? I'll get, I'll get, I'll fill this up, and you'll need to go to the courthouse over there. I've got people all down in Whitestone that are complaining. A few months ago, I came and spoke with Don Gill, and he said, "There's a tremendous amount of complaints." Are y'all documenting those? Well-
So what are your suggestions?
I think in zoning, residential should be residential. I don't think there should be an exception. You've got other zonings to permit. Hotels, rentals. I think most of the people, and I don't know this, maybe y'all have that, not this figure, but most of the rentals that are being rented in this community, I would dare say is people that don't live here. Al Pollard Jr. put up several, nothing but rentals in Irvington, but it's a commercial zone. That's okay. But in a residential community, I don't think parties, firecrackers, I mean, 11:30, 12 o'clock at night. It's not a holiday, it's not 4th of July, it's nothing. These are the things I am putting up with, and my wife, and our community. And I'm gonna spend probably $25,000 to $30,000 with an attorney to try to make the deed that states for residential use only, to fight this guy, to get him stopped. Our community, at its last board meeting or annual meeting, put into our bylaws, no short-term rentals, 30 days or more. Then you get to know who's there. I don't care if someone has a piece of property and rents it to a teacher or policeman, or, you get to know those people. We have no clue who comes in every week, who they are, where they're from, what kind of background they have. And it's scary.
I'm getting a little confused, so you are, you are, you are in our HOA?
We're in a properties association, yes.
So you have a covenant?
Yes.
Okay, so y'all have amended your covenant now?
Correct.
Okay, so you can, you can kind of take care of your problem.
No, we can't, he says you can't stop me. It's the owner's attitude.
That's his own attitude, yeah.
And, and how are we gonna stop him?
You have to go to court.
Have you heard any cases here in the community like that?
No, but I know a lot of HOAs are changing their covenant.
And so if they're doing it, isn't that telling you something?
Well, we know, you know, I'm hearing it.
Isn't that telling you that they, the-
We know we got a problem, that's how we-
Put, put the short-term rentals and a commercial zone piece of property. That's all I like to say.
Let me, let me respond by saying that, under my proposal, and again, this is my proposal, it's not the county's proposal or the planning commission's proposal. But under my proposal, all these people who are doing this as a business, like this guy, would have to apply for a permit from the county, at which there would be a public hearing, where people like you, all the neighbors could come in and testify as to what you've been putting up with. And I doubt very much if the board would issue him a permit, he'd be out of business. So we're talking about measures that will help with your problem. And I can understand how frustrated you are. I would be too, anyone would be. But I, I think we're trying to do things that will help resolve a lot of these problems. I mean, these people would have to get a permit.
Well, I-
Or even, even the ones who occupy their property while it's being rented out would have to get a license. And the county can deny a license if they have a history of bad behavior. So we're trying to come up with a process that allows us to get them out of business. And you ask if I, I had one near me, and I do, two doors down. Right now, it's not being used as a short-term rental, but two or three years ago, for two or three years, two guys from South Africa owned the house, and they were only up here maybe a month, a year. The rest of the time, they did short-term rentals. And for those two or three years, we never had a complaint. They were-
You're fortunate.
They were not neighbors that we could get to know. We would've preferred a regular neighbor that we could get to know and-
I think most neighborhoods or most people would prefer neighbors that they know. I would agree. Yes, but the fines that y'all are proposing and things like that? These people are making $600 and $700 a night, a $500 fine is nothing, they'd be glad to pay that.
We're also talking about taking away their permits or licenses.
That I'd like to see something to be able to do that, for the ones that are bad. And I have one that's bad next door.
Sounds like real bad.
Thank y'all for your time.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
Part of the commercial, I think you said before, that's been tested in some state where it's actually a commercial or residential, this short-term.
Supreme Court in South Dakota.
And they decided it was residential. I mean, that, that might not weigh in Virginia, but still.
Yeah.
Well, could you ask Mr. Cornwell, what if our state Supreme Court is ever-
What we define it as?
Yeah, he would probably know off the top of his head, I would think.
Yes, sir. Would you like to make a comment?
Sure. Make it kind of brief, if you don't mind, all of us are sleeping.
My name's Kevin Crawford. I've heard some really interesting things here tonight. I, I know that you guys have this on board, it is an issue. I'd like to speak to basically two things in particular. I'm in a situation where I have not only a non-owner-occupied, short-term rental directly across the street from me, but my neighbor to the left has an owner-occupied, short-term rental. So I've got both of them going on simultaneously. The non-occupied rental, we've experienced a number of issues. We've had, we've had trash on the streets. We live in a community where you come out and pick up the trashcans. We brought to their attention that trash cans shouldn't be on the street seven days a week. For the first week or two, we were actually taking it and putting it back on their property. We were then notified by them that, not to go onto their property, and that trash can has sat on the street for the last seven weeks. Now, may not bother you, but there's not another trash can in our neighborhood that sits on the street past 12 o'clock on the day of pickup. The other issue is, for us, has been with the short-term rentals. They get a lot of traffic because it is, it is a short-term rental that allows pets. And so, several times a week, we have new renters with new dogs. And we have a dog, most people in our neighborhood have dogs. I've come to find out, most people on the northern neck have dogs. Our dog has actually started to experience behavioral problems from having a constant stream of new dogs across the street. She's somewhat territorial, she's not, she's not aggressive, but she knows what's going on. That's an issue for us. You, you asked Bruce about recommendations. I've given Ty kind of a copy of what our thoughts are on this. I think Mr. Lee, my wife spoke with you yesterday. In the document, we actually, we actually had a couple of suggestions. Of course, one of them is extreme, but that's okay. The preferred solution was no rentals less than six months, but that's probably not gonna happen. However, if you were going to, if there are going to be rentals of, well, let me rephrase that. When we're talking about STROs, our recommendation is that they have to be owner-occupied, and the owner must be on premises when it's rented as an STR. Your proposal suggested something similar along those lines, but when the question was asked, they're in Florida, could they rent them out? By your proposal, that could be rented out, and you're back to the same issue. And then, again, because of, because of the dog, firm believer in, if you're gonna do short-term rentals, okay, fine, no pets, because it's just, it's disruptive to a neighborhood. We have a neighborhood where we have eight people that walk dogs, and it's an issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Great points, thank everyone for what they added. Guess we'll table this and bring it back next week?
Let me ask what the planning commission's consensus is as far as Mr. Chup's idea of breaking it down into hosted and unhosted. Is that something that the planning commission agrees with, or?
The two categories you made?
Yeah.
I think it's fair for the two categories of ownership or rentalship, whatever that's a word.
It sounds, um, I mean, I would like to see it. I can't hear that, little ways away, but still, I would like to see what he, what he was talking about, proposing. For hosted versus unhosted. I don't think that homeowner necessarily has to be there all the time. The length of time they need to stay? I'm not sure. But, um-
But as far as the county, looking at it from two different sides?
Yeah, I was just, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, I could take a stab at putting a proposal together for various amendments to the zoning ordinance for this, for your next meeting. But I wanted to get a sense from you all, did you want to break it down into hosted and unhosted?
Does hosted come onto the bed and breakfast by any means?
No, well, a bed, a bed and breakfast requires a special exception.
Already?
Already, that's already there. I mean, what Mr. Chup was saying was, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, that the hosted version would not require a special exception, but does require the owner or an agent to be on site. And maybe, you know, maybe we take it one step further based on comments we've heard, that a hosted version requires an owner to be on site. And, and then the unhosted version would require a special exception.
With a public hearing?
With a public hearing.
Like we, we read in some of those ordinance, we can define it as operator. Instead of the host.
Yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna go down that road, but I, I mean, I'm just, just trying to- We've got to progress somewhere, and I think everybody's scratching their heads now where to go, so I'm trying to, trying to throw some ideas out here to see.
I think that would be an excellent change in what I propose. I, I think if the owner is on premises, the problems you're gonna have are cut way more than in half. I, I think it solves 90% of the problems, if the owner is there.
I guess if you're asking me, Don, I like the two-pronged approach, but we've got to have some teeth, like they were saying. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna do it, gotta have some, some teeth. So issuing of the license is a great idea, and or, in accordance with the special exception as well.
Yeah, the county doesn't require business licenses, that, you know, some towns do, and I know Kilmarnock and Irvington does, the county does not require business licenses. But we basically have something similar with the registry and the fee for the registry. So to me, that's, that's the same, same thing. And, you know, the fee for, fee for special exception for the unhosted version, you know, we could increase the fee on that. We're limited by state code of what the penalty for non-registering can be. That, that can't, cannot exceed 500, but we could increase the special exception application fee. So I'll take a stab at, at creating a hosted versus an unhosted version, and take a look at the zoning districts, and, and bring back, bring back something for you all to chew on at your October, what is it, 17th meeting, 20th? October 20th? Yeah, and then maybe based on that, you all can arrive at what you want to send to public hearing. And then your November meeting can be November 10th. We would still have time to advertise, based on that October 20th meeting, for November 10th, public hearings. And then the board, the board could get it at their December 15th meeting. So, you know, wheels of government turn slow, but that's, that's probably the quickest schedule we can follow.
I think it's a great idea.
Are most of these LBNBs, are they like weekend, week, through the week or weekend thing?
Both.
Is that what most of these are?
Both.
Yeah, they could be anything.
I mean, I know they could be anything, but the greater majority.
Oh, I-
Are they weekend, you know, seven days?
Weekend or, or a few days.
Like a vacation.
That's what I would say, yeah, long weekend, a week, that's what I see.
The ones that end with noon are all-
Those could be nightly.
My SRT, the SRT across the street from me is non-owner-occupied. They have people there, and not the same people there, five to six days a week. Sometimes it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, sometimes it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then there's a break, and then somebody's there Thursday, Friday, and then there's a break, and somebody's there.
That could be some of that language saying that it could be only one or two renters per building per-
Yeah, well, that, that gets back to one of the points I made early on. One of the things that caught my eye was, you know, only one rental per week, or maximum of two rentals per week. And I, I'll take a stab at a list of those as well, that could-
Go back to what Mr. Davenport said, you know, having people coming in and out of your neighborhood five, six, you know, times, that's, it does upset the, our rural nature, there's no doubt about it.
And I just wanted to make one clarification, in case Jackie puts this in the paper. When I was talking about how much money is generated by the transient occupancy tax in Lancaster, I said FY '21 and FY '22. Actually, I misread this, my eyes are getting worse as I get older. It was, it was $7,741.68 from 2021, collected in 2022. So all of that was in FY '22. So the total amount for FY '22 was $15,093.42, so just- But that's just, that's just a short-term rental, yes.
And that's, that doesn't consider that lodging tax, that the bed and breakfast is at the bed?
That is the lodging tax for short-term rentals.
Okay, allegedly.
Yes, the ones we know of.
I think it's a great plan, Don.
There's nothing magical in, in the term license that I applied to the, the on-premises people. The only reason I put it in there was so that there would be something that we could revoke if they misbehave, if we have problems with one of those. So maybe there's another term that-
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we can revoke their registry, their, their registration after, after three violations. But see, that's another point. The county attorney has said that to really be considered a violation, it has to be a conviction. So, that's-
Gee, I'll never get that.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll take a stab at throwing something together for you for next month. So, I'll take a stab at throwing something together for you for next month.
I know you're ready to move on, but just one question. You kept saying South Dakota, I heard you say it twice, but I can't hear what you're saying. What were you talking about, South Dakota Supreme Court?
Uh, it was a case law.
That's it.
Colin versus Menard, where the neighborhood said that it was a commercial use in a residential area. And Supreme Court cited that they deemed it a residential purpose. SCR, short-term rentals as a residential.
Okay.
Okay. That was a lot of input, but it's a pretty big topic. So, our next, moving right along, our final discussion item is comprehensive plan review, chapter seven. Mr. Farrell?
Yes, sir. So we're gonna continue with our update on the comprehensive plan in chapter seven. You unfortunately missed last month's meeting, but, uh, Vice Chair Sputh did an amazing job. Went a lot further than I thought we were gonna go. So what you'll find is the highlighted in yellow is struck, and the new verbiage would be in the highlighted red. There are a few points, uh, page one, we added that last bullet. I just wanted to make sure you guys were good with that, the verbiage.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Let's see, the next update was, uh, seven dash four, page seven dash four, purchase of development rights, transfer of development rights. The yellow was struck and updated in red.
Yeah, the updates, yeah, I, I looked through all those updates.
Okay. Just to note, seven dash six, that is still, I'm waiting on that information. That's why there's no red there.
That was my question.
All right, and then we'll, if you, uh, it doesn't have a number, but the first Lancaster map, the future land use map. I wanna thank, uh, our environmental codes and compliance officer, Olivia Hall. She was able to work with what we had. And, uh, the little stars down at the bottom, which weren't there in the previous map, shows the updated, uh, projects that the county is working on with public access. What already exists, uh, Triway Trail, we didn't add yet, but that will come in the next update, hopefully.
The good thing is there were, there were a lot of stuff to add.
Yes.
Since the last time.
And the next map for the growth area, that map was corrected as well. Move on. Okay, so seven dash 18, Mr. Chup, I think it was you that wanted to add a little verbiage here, for, what was that, the Granville Creek Thomas Landing Site? So we added the Waterman's Farmers Market, possibly? Okay.
I think that's a good description of it.
Okay. Next page, seven dash 19, it's just an update.
Update, yeah.
Okay, so seven dash 21, uh, didn't like the verbiage of bargain sales. So I wanted to make sure I went on and tried to find synonyms to that. So how do you feel about negotiations to promote the con- conservation of sensitive lands?
I think it's good.
Okay.
I don't know what we're saying there, but I didn't know before.
It's, it's better than bargain sales.
Looks good.
Okay, page, uh, seven dash 24, this was an add-in, um, about the Triway Trail.
I would say that, uh, we need a little description of what the Triway Trail is.
Yeah.
Okay, so you wanna add on to what it stated in chapter six? You wanted to add it on in chapter seven as well? Well, if you look at the next bullet...
Well, if we're gonna mention it, I think, uh, either take it out or...
It's explained in chapter six.
Let the reader know what, what it is.
It's explained in chapter six.
Huh?
It is explained in chapter six. It needs to be there too?
Which is nice if somebody's reading both chapters, but anyway.
Maybe you could just add, say, uh, that will connect the three incorporated towns. You know, just something, you know...
But it's a trail, it, uh...
A proposed pedestrian trail that will connect the three towns.
Yeah, some, yeah, just, just a little bit more. Even though it's explained in chapter six, just give a little, little more explanation there.
I can fix that. All right, and, uh, seven dash 25's updates.
Did it look good?
So, the last bullet...
I had a question on seven 25.
Okay.
The, the 12.5% statewide, that was, that didn't change, so is that still correct?
That, that's, I, I will, that's a good guess, thank you. I missed that. Okay. And the last bullet, um, you guys wanted to strike out the recreation department. What do you think about the, what I've added?
Where's that?
Encourage the creation of Lancaster County Parks and Public Access Sites. Hire a parks and recreation director to facilitate the parks and recreation program.
Sounds fine to me.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we don't have a parks and recreation, well, we don't have a department. I guess you could call it a program. I think I'd rather, instead of that word director, I'd rather it be coordinator.
Coordinator, okay.
They make less money.
They do.
What's that?
They make less money.
Spoken like a principal?
Spoken like a principal.
Seven dash 26, an update.
Update, yeah.
So seven dash 27, we were striking this out completely. Seven dash 28, just an update, or add, added verbiage. Okay, seven 29, you'll notice paragraph two and three, there's no red, because I'm still waiting on the information for that. And I believe that was it. So nothing in red to, to change at this point?
No, it looks like a very great job. I think we're ready for that out for public hearing next month.
Well, he, he had a couple of...
I, I gotta, one more, just a, a couple of updates, I didn't have the information yet.
Yeah, a couple of them where he didn't have the...
So we just wait for the...
Yeah, just, just have another review in, in October. And, uh, again, if it's ready after that meeting to go to public hearing, you'll have time to advertise for November 10th meeting.
But you have me very optimistic now.
I thought it was really good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Costello has something to say there.
So, back from 2007, it's always stated that?
Yeah.
So with our platform that we currently have, it's kinda hard to edit it. Uh, but we, we'll take a shot at it.
I, I bet she can do it.
She can, she can.
I bet she can do it. The problem is, the PDC many years ago created this, and they don't have the same software now. And I, I think that was the problem Bill ran into.
Thanks, everyone, tonight. I know it was a longer than normal meeting, but the input was greatly appreciated, at least for me and from the public as well. Any...